We are going to call the Board of Selectmen for Monday, December nineteenth to order. On the agenda, we have a call to order. Pledge of Allegiance, visitors comments, old business, FY twenty twenty-two audit update, old, other old business, new business, annual renewals for liquor, class one, two, and three. Other new business, CMRPC alternate appointments, discussion interval ARPA funding, upgrade phone system, committee reports, town administrator report, signatures and approvals, government.gov for new website, Selectman Roundtable, and then the informational meeting regarding reference and questions to take place on January seventh, twenty twenty-three. Shall the Town of Hardwick approve the November ninth, twenty twenty-two vote of the Board of Selectmen authorizing? Sorry, I didn't. Location of a horse race track at a property known as Great Medical Farm and located in two twenty-eight Berry Road. Yes, no, and last item is adjournment. Um, if you wouldn't mind, we do have a flag, if you wouldn't mind, rise and go into for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considering public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So before we start, we do have one of our members of the board that is on Zoom, so I will call the roll for attendance purposes. Uh, Julie Quink, I'm here. Kelly Kemp? Kelly here. Rob Rockles?
Yeah.
So he said here. So we are all in attendance. Um, are there any business comments not related to anything on the agendas before we move forward?
Okay, well, that's like mine has been very long time. Um, under old business, we have the FY twenty twenty-two audit update. Cool?
Yes.
It's really quick. We don't have anything yet, but I did speak with Todd Jersey, our auditors today, and he will have something to us by the end of the week, so we will fulfill our USDA requirement on having it done by end of the year. And then we'll be good for next year. We're on track because we're behind. So you, we have twenty-one and twenty-two, we'll be right back next week, at least in the draft form enough good enough to send it to the rest table.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, is there any other old business? Yes? No? Kelly, Rob, anything? Okay. Um, under new business, we have the annual renewals for liquor and class one, two, and three licenses?
I'm not in the folder.
Do we have a list of them?
No.
Okay. So the subjects, because we annually approve all of them, each one individually, individually on this.
Right.
Okay. Have you looked through them? You want to look through them before we? Everyone has all of their fees and everything is inspections have been done, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, do you want to go through them, read them?
I can.
Okay. Rob, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
That was a yes. Okay, I'm just gonna start from the top. Um, I would make a motion to approve, uh, used car dealer license class two for Jerry Dacken, DBA Dacken's Garage, thirty-one Spring Street, Gumbel. Is there a second, Rob?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, do you actually want to just?
Go through them all?
Why don't we go through them all?
Definitely spend the time to move them.
Yep. I would also move to approve the used car dealer license class two and three to Williams S. David, DBA Hardwick Auto Sales LLC, two five eight three Greenwood, Hardwick, Massachusetts. Leo Ostegi, LJ Ostegi Repair, sixteen eighty-six Berry Road. Yeah, I'm sorry, and that is a used car dealer class two license. Used car dealer license class two. George A. Riley, DBA Motor Specialties Company, four ninety-two Charlie Road, Hardwick. Used car dealer license class two. Daniel Hershey, Brian Lisby, Edward McBrue, Ashley Kulig, DBA Affordable Cars, twenty eighty-nine Greenwood. Also, used car dealer license class two, George Anderson, DBA Anderson Restorations, eleven oh seven Jackson Road, Hardwick. Used car dealer license class two, James Regan, nineteen Church Street, Gumbel. Common. Yeah. Victular license for BB's Coffee House of Hardwick. Both licenses might be there. Are they? So the second page may be. Her name, her license. Sorry. Also, license alcoholic beverages, certain M.B. LLC, DBA BB's Coffee House, fourteen Berry Road. So we're going to check. Right, and also John Samic Hardwick Vineyard and Winery for a youthful dress license. Um, thirty-three oh five Greenwood Road. Okay, also motor vehicle junk license, class three for George Anderson, DBA Anderson Restorations. Also eleven oh seven Jackson Road. Also for John Samic Hardwick Vineyard and Winery LLC, common Victular's license. And a pharmacy requiring permit also for John Samic Hardwick Vineyard and Winery LLC. Common Victular's license for the Hardwick Rod and Gun Club. And also a license of alcoholic beverages for the Hardwick Rod and Gun Club, fifty-nine Fresh River. Common Victular's license for South Berry Rod and Gun Club, and also a license for alcoholic beverages for the South Berry Rod and Gun Club, twenty-six twenty-six Berry Road. Also for Hardwick Crossing Inc., common Victular's license, and a license of alcoholic beverages for Hardwick Crossing Inc., that's two six two, well, or. Common Victular's license for Hardwick House of Pizza, and also a license for alcoholic beverages for Zacharias. Yeah, Hardwick House of Pizza. Seventy-six Main Street, Gumbel. I'm not gonna try to butcher that poor man's name. Oh, and also, nobody said that. And, uh, Eagle Hill Foundation for Common Victular's license, and also a license for alcoholic beverages for Eagle Hill Foundation. That's two four two, old. Last Town Brewing Company for Common Victular's license. And also pharmacy series pouring permit for Last Town Brewing Company. That's it. And three J MB Corp., Hardwick Market and Package Store for Common Victular's license, and also a license for alcoholic beverages for three J MB Corp., DBA Hardwick Market and Package Store, two three two, um, Main Street. Oh, wait, I think these are the ones. Oh, sorry. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I think so. And lastly, for Common Victular's license, DCTF Corp., uh, and also for a license of alcoholic beverages for DC, DCTF Corp., that's eighteen thirty-nine Lower Road, Hardwick, Mass. Oops. Yeah. So that's the, um. That's what came to me. Yeah, that's all. New for us. Yeah. So Kelly made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on all of the licenses and renewals? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Julie Quink, yes. Kelly Kemp?
Yes.
Rob Rockles?
Yes.
Motion carries. Yeah, let's just put it aside and we're glad.
Yep. Okay. Next item on the agendas. Is there any other?
There is.
Other than?
Last year, I believe, was the first year because you hadn't received it before then. I remember getting it from the East Quavon Land Trust on behalf of the Board of Directors. Uh, they donate three hundred dollars to the town. Uh, and last year you authorized it to go to the Park and Racks, or to the Wolf and X-Good to authorize it to go again. It's just a donation, um, from the East Quavon Land Trust to support the town's infrastructure improvement efforts where possible. That just came in today.
No, maybe the problem with the Parks and Rec seems fitting for the words. I'm sorry, yeah, I know, I don't have. Where the, the, uh, news towards Parks and Rec's giving, where it's coming from. Kind of stay in line with that.
Rob, any comments?
No.
That would be a no. Um, I don't think, do you need a vote for that?
No.
No, it's okay. Uh, any?
One more. Molly Anson, our accountant firm, has been acquired by Markham. I don't know if you ever see those commercials, that's Markham. Uh, so as of July, as of January one, they will be under Markham or partnering with Markham. And, uh, they need a signature from you. So, uh, that also came in today that you'll need to sign. And we're with Molly Anson, so I don't know that we would not sign or have a choice.
What do we sign up?
Yeah, yeah, these are the letters. Here's the firm's profile of Markham, but I'm sure you know who they are.
I do. I would anticipate that, um, we should ask about the fee. We should ask, we should inquire about the fee. Markham is a much larger firm.
Right.
Make sure.
I mean, nothing will change until July one, and maybe we'll just have to start looking for our accountant.
I would confirm that nothing will change us until July first.
Okay, so you don't want to sign it? Do you want me to, do you want to authorize me to sign it if there's no change?
So this letter that we have in front of us is just to allow, uh, Melanson to share our information with Markham. I don't see any issue with that. Um. We should ask them to update our town administrator's name.
Yeah. From the letter. Agreed.
You guys authorize me to sign this?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
No change in the fee. I just texted Lori.
Do you want to pack up your work?
You just get it first and then freeze. So in your packet is the annual, um, appointment for CMRPC. Planning Board is the delegate. Um, and then the alternate is the Board of Selectmen, uh, choice, and it's a resident of the community. I don't know who it was. Or is. Um. I, I was assuming that it was the plan, saying the planning board does it, and they have the same member, and you also choose yourselves as one of the members. Um. But I don't know, because I haven't done this before, so I don't know. Um, so there's the delegation appointment for FY twenty-three. Um, and planning board, I gave them a copy, and here's your copy.
Have they decided on from the planning board?
No, the planning board hasn't had their meeting yet. I think it's tomorrow.
So should we, um, the Board of Selectmen appoint an alternate? Should we request letters of interest? Position?
So it says the current planning board's delegate is Joseph Elliott, who I don't believe is on the planning board, and then the Board of Selectmen is vacant. Um. It can be, it just has to be a resident of the community. It doesn't have to be one of your boards. So if you want to request letters of interest and, um.
I think it's just the planning board delegates someone.
The planning board delegates someone, and then if, you know, that delegate isn't available, then the Board of Selectmen has an alternate. So anyone wishing to be, um, the alternate, please send letters of interest. This is for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Um. Please send letters of interest by email to Nicole, um, and we will get that, um, appointment made.
Yeah. So the, the planning board delegate has to be a member of them. And a resident of town.
Right. So Elliott is still on the resident of town.
Yeah.
Obviously a couple.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will wait for the planning board's, um, appointment and then the suggestion. Actually, they do the appointing. So, and if letters of interest anywhere for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, please get them to Nicole.
I've been serving as the all for the planning board and have attended some of the state meetings. Maybe so. If it's built, unless something has happened, but.
So you're the delegates for the planning board or the alternate?
They've called me whenever, um, wants me to serve as that role as an alternate.
Okay.
I'm not on the, I'm on the planning board.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
It, Rob's just picking up while I'm saying.
Rob, is that better? Well, I'm sure he'll let us know if he can hear us. Um, discussion. Okay, thank you. Discussion interval relative to ARPA funding?
Thanks. In your packet, you have two, um, uh, quotes for new telephones. Obviously, recall, we need a new system because it's not E nine one, one compliant. Um, so Angie got, uh, some quotes. One of them is Moore Phone System, which we have now, and you can see the fees broken out, and the annual fee's broken out. And the other is Comcast, who we currently use, obviously, as our regular phone, um, provider. Um, so the annual fee for Comcast is going to be eighty-six hundred and eighty-six, eight thousand, six hundred, five dollars and eighty cents a year, and more would be eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. It's also over Zoom. It's a Zoom license for these phones through more. And, uh, I, it's not that I'm not familiar with it, or, or, uh, don't think that they would do a good job. I just feel like it's a private company, an app. And I think about the future, and Comcast has the phones. They're gonna give them to us at no cost, where more would be about ninety-five hundred dollars. And then we have all these monthly charges for Zoom and support services. Um, so I do recommend that we go with Comcast. They are going to give us the phone, so we have thirty-three phones. Um, and the total cost of installation will be about twelve hundred dollars, two hundred dollars per location. Um, and then we'll have to start budgeting for this next year. We don't have it right now in our budget, which is why I was asking for ARPA. Um, maybe half of it, because half the year's gone. Um, and then we'll, this year I'll put it in the budget.
What were we paying before? How do we not pay for our phone?
We don't have to pay for our, my, I'm sorry.
So, uh, the question is, who have we been using? And I, we have been using more, and I'm looking at Ryan because he's got the institutional knowledge. Um, we don't have a contract with them. In my other towns that I've been through, we have contracts with phone companies to help assist us with, um, everything, because they're like mini computers. Um, but here, what we've been using more, we don't pay them anything annually. But this is a change, and these, these phones are much more sophisticated, and once again, E nine one compliant.
Rob, any comments or questions for Nicole?
Yeah. At this time?
Not, no, not at this time. Um, we prepared the board on this.
Yeah, I don't, you have to.
So my thought is we do have to come into compliance with our phones, correct, Nicole?
Yeah.
So.
If you're making a. When Kevin.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to, um, use ARPA funding. What do we feel comfortable with budgeting for the rest of this year? To get this going, or do we? So the installation is probably twelve hundred dollars, eleven ninety-nine seventy. And then after that, the annual fee is eighty-six, so five eighty. But we're only looking at a half a year at this point. But if you could give me a little cushion in case I forgot a phone.
Right.
Something, yeah.
When are they gonna install us?
Oh, I, I, they keep calling me always.
They must need our approval before they can send anything up, I'm sure. I mean, if we did the installation and at least half of.
So that would be about eight months, so let's give a little, that's for the charge plus the installation.
Do you want to do fifty-eight hundred or six thousand?
Um, I would do six thousand and then twelve hundred for the installation, so, um, I would say seventy-two hundred.
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve ARPA funding for the cost of installation with Comcast for our new phone system, twelve hundred dollars. And then on top of that, six thousand dollars towards the annual fee for a total of seven thousand, two hundred dollars.
Rob, is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Julie is yes. Kelly?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is committee reports. Do we have any?
No, I got the dot gov.
Okay.
The dot gov.
Okay, it's just down, way down on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay? That's okay. That's okay. Do you want to do the, we can take it up now if you want. Confused enough. You don't have that, you don't, just confuse me more. So the next item on the agenda is committee reports.
Yeah. Yes.
Police Fire Highway.
Highway, yeah, I read them.
Okay. Rob, have you read through the committee reports? Any questions or comments?
Sorry, I'm looking at them, and then I gotta keep switching back and forth to unmute myself. No, I, I don't have any questions.
Okay, great. Um, town administrator report, we all have them in our packet. In the interest of time and getting through all of our business before the informational meeting, are we okay with reviewing the report? Did you have any, were there any questions for Nicole on the report? I didn't have any.
I'll just add that.
I did listen in last Wednesday to WARE and thought Nicole did a great job with just getting some positive information out. So that was, that was great.
Thanks, Nicole. Rob, any questions on the administrator report?
No.
Okay. Okay, great. Uh, Nicole, now we're on the dot gov.
So as you know, you approved a new website for us, um, to be ADA compliant, which we are not. Um, and that I, you know, our current webmaster, Julie Marquette, does a great job. Um, but I think there was some miscommunication, and I have been under the impression that she, uh, sort of wanted to step away from that. So I reached out to a typical municipal, or I reached out to several municipal, uh, website, um, builders. And we went with Civic Plus, that's pretty much done. Uh, but then also, we are not as safe as we could be if we had a dot gov website. I mean, I'm sorry, email, website, website, and email. Our email will change too. Um, as we would be if we have dot gov as opposed to dot com. So this is a letter that has to come from the Board of Selectmen Chair to authorize the responsibility of the domain name hardwick-ma.gov to be delegated to the Town of Hardwick.
Any comments or questions for Nicole on that? You want to make a motion to, um, authorize me to sign that?
I will make a motion to authorize Julie to sign the letter to dot gov domain registration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the rolls. Julie is yes. Ellie?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. You have anything for the Selectman Roundtable? Rob, Kelly, you know? Um, the town clerk has asked for a few minutes of time. It is not on the agenda, but at the chair's discretion, we can add items onto the agenda. While he is speaking, we're gonna do some signing up here and listen. Um, and then we're going to take a few minute recess, um, so we can make sure that people are sitting in the right spots, um, that everybody has the handouts. After Ryan finishes, please come up and make sure that you get, there's two sets of handouts. Um, and then we will start the informational session.
Thank you, Minister. So I'm probably creaking to the choir with everything, but I just want to just put a couple announcements out there. Special election will be held Saturday, January seventh, two thousand twenty-three. From noon to seven, right here in the gymnasium, I don't know the configuration will be strategic, where you will be coming in through the cafeteria and coming to this place. Given the uncertain weather that may occur that day, there are plenty of vote by mail applications that are outside here. Uh, they're also outside my office. They can drop them on the drop box at the top upstairs of the municipal building. Uh, you can fax them to me, you can scan them, email them to my email address, you can mail them, give them to me in person. Uh, those wishing to vote by mail must submit your requests later Friday, Friday, the seventh, the thirtieth. I will not be in the office. However, I will come into the office about ten minutes to five. I'll check the email, I'll check the email, I'll check the drop box and make sure that everything, uh, that has been submitted on time will, you know, be vote by mail valid. But I just want to kind of clarify something in comparison to vote by mail. This is a little, uh, subject. Uh, same law mandates vote by mail in California for this poll, unless there's a public hearing that's all forty-five days required to the party. And the Board of Selectmen votes auto. In this case here, we didn't even have four twenty days, so we didn't have enough time to schedule a vote here. Um, in my role as clerk, I'm gonna be asking the Board to opt out. It is a great deal of work to do vote by mail. Um, so I just want to make you aware that, you know, for this election here, given the timing, and given the time of year with everything, um, it certainly, it, it, it makes sense, quite for the April election and all the others. Uh, in my opinion, it doesn't. So if you feel differently, you can come to the public hearing and express it, but it's ultimately going to be the Board of Selectmen's role. On the flip side, the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, decided to make in-person voting something that you opt into. So while vote by mail is automatic, if I wanted to have early voting sessions in person at the municipal building that are different state elections, we have to agree to do that. And in order to do that, it's another procedure where fifty percent of the voter registrars has to recommend it, and the Board of Selectmen does so. So in this case here, there's not going to be early voting in person. They'll be vote by mail, and then they'll be voting here. All vote by mail ballots have to be back by seven P.M. There's no postmark, and it comes in two days later. It's gonna be in the drop box, or as we have voted by seven P.M. on Saturday, January seventh. Um, those that are not able to make the polls in the morning, they make an appointment with me to vote absentee in person in my office. The deadline for that is Thursday, January fifth, by five P.M. So I highly suggest that those wishing to vote absentee who has not chosen to vote by mail up to please reach out to my office and schedule an appointment. On the day of the election, observers are allowed to observe the process up to one and a half hour before the polls are open, to observe the election workers who inspected. to observe the election workers who inspect the tabulator and print out the zero report prior to the polls opening. While not required, it's highly recommended that those wishing to observe the election, reach out to my office, as space is limited and I can restrict the number of those observing. There will be allowed two observers from the yes campaign and two observers from the no campaign. The technical process will have the alphabet slip, that's the reason for the two observers. There's gonna be a handout on the Secretary of State's, if you have your campaign and the respective yes campaign, that people just reach out to me and we certainly get what's seated. So I'll simulate that to those observing on that day, explain what's allowed, and expect all observing to adhere to the rules or you're subject to removal from the location. And lastly, concerning signings and campaigning and everything, you know, like there was somewhere outside there. I mean, first of all, that's allowed, it wasn't technically a meeting. You have to be 50 feet away, and there will be two signs, and the ground's gonna be frozen, so they're not gonna be in the ground, they're gonna be in the little pipelines. That's, that's your, that's your deadline, not your deadline, that's your limitation. You can't do anything in that area. I'm doing anything in that area. You will be here if you can, it just, just stay on that, so that's really the bottom line there. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to call my office, email me, my cell phone's on the website, you can phone me as well. I will not be available after Wednesday until voter registration, which is the 28th of December from 9:00 to 5:00. If you're not registered to vote, Wednesday, the 28th of December at 5:00 p.m. is the deadline in order to register to vote for this special election. And you can come in any other time that I'm in my office, as well. So thank you for listening, and I'll turn it back to the Minister.
So we are going to take a five-minute recess. Before we do that, there are two handouts on the front. The low-budget version over here, the ones I printed, so they're not stapled. They are crossways, there are two pages. Those are responses that were questions and answers, answers by the Town Administrator and Town Counsel. There's another handout that is stapled, that is front and back, and that was put together, those are questions that were asked of the proponent and those are their responses. If there are any non-residents sitting in this area, please make sure that you're, move yourself to the non-resident area. So on this side, we have, we have the group, the panel for those against the proposal. And we would ask that it would make sense for non-residents to sit on that side, if that's the side of your, of your choosing. And then over here will be the proponents, those in favor of the proposal, and then any non-residents on that side. So I will give you a couple minutes, let's take five minutes to get your handouts. Let's get everyone sitting in the right spots, and then we'll reconvene, and I will talk through the procedure and sort of the rules on how this is gonna work.
Can I ask you guys a quick question? I think we've met the whole. Can I, that's why some of my comments were not included in the Q and As, because you guys have false information stuck in your Q and As. A hundred days of racing has not been covered by legislation, it's zero days of racing.
Okay.
So 2019, Council should have done some homework.
Okay, we, we.
I guess we made a mistake in one of our answers.
I submitted my comments to try to get.
So we have, all of our non-residents are seated where they need to be seated. So the way this is gonna work, it's gonna work very similar to the rest of our meetings that we've had. So as in meetings past, I asked, ask everyone to be respectful. If there are, is any jeering, I ask no applause, this is not, this isn't a debate, this isn't a rally, this is an information session that we're trying to put forward, so people will have factual information for the upcoming election. If there is any disrespectful behavior, I will warn you once. If it continues, you will be removed and you will not be allowed back in. The police are aware, I will call on them and you will be removed. I hope it doesn't get to that, it hasn't so far yet. It's been a little close sometimes, but I think we were to sort of come back. So again, I ask that you be respectful to anyone who's speaking. I also ask, and I have asked both, both groups who are going to speak to you tonight, to be factual. And I have every confidence that that will happen. The point of this meeting is not for speculation, it's not for anything that is, anything but factual. That's what we promised you, and I'm, I'm hoping that that's really what gets delivered tonight. So the way this is going to work is I'm going to read the questions. That's what we promised you and I'm hoping that that's really what gets delivered tonight. So the way this is going to work is I'm going to read the questions first. Not the ones put together by the proponent, because we'll be here all night. We are done at 8:30. Out of courtesy for the janitor here and courtesy for the school, we are hard out at 8:30. So I will read the questions that were put together by the administrator and council. You have a very lengthy document that was put together by the proponent with lots of questions and answers. You can read that, these are posted on our website, I believe they were posted earlier today. So they are available, there are numerous copies up here, so you can take more than one if you'd like. So I will read the questions. We will allow each of the groups, I suggested about 15 minutes to talk about reasoning, facts, relative to your respective positions. All questions will go through me as the chair. So keep in mind, this is a board of selectmen meeting. All questions will go through me. The board is in no way taking any position on this, we have not been involved in any of, other than setting the format, we have not been involved in any, either side. Numerous conversations about the format and making sure that it's reasonable and fair. We will entertain questions if time permits. I have been asked that non-residents not be allowed to speak. So we certainly will respect that. If there is something that we need to have answered, we will figure out a way to get it answered for you. And so everyone has the information they need. Any questions before we start? Okay, so I am going to read the answers that were put together by the town administrator and town council. There is a potential modification to one of the answers and Nicole will mention that to you when we get there. So the first, and the importance of reading these questions is we have folks on Zoom and we have, this is live stream, that may not have access to these documents, so I felt it was important to at least go through these. Does a racing law specify the total number of race days needed in order to qualify per year for both a racing license and a simulcast license? And if so, how many days of racing are required under the law? So what is written here, pursuant to general law, chapter 128, C section 2. The current statutory minimum number of race days required to qualify for a simulcast license is 100 days. The gaming commission has communicated to the town administrator that it expects the statutory minimum number of race days to be reduced to 20 days as of August 2023, with the commission retaining discretion to reduce the minimum number of race days required to obtain a simulcast license to below 20. Nicole, is this where you want to add?
Okay. I don't have any direct knowledge that this is completely factual. I had somebody just a little bit ago, just when we went for a recess and came up to me and said that 100 days is not the actual minimum, that it's, there was an amendment to the statute, which is in the mass general law, chapter 128A, that it's actually zero. So I'm gonna have to go back and go through the amendments to see if that's true. I know that online, right now, if you Google the mass general law 128, it says 100 in there. So it may have, I don't know, it may have changed, okay? That's all I can say about that. As far as the muting goes, I'm asked to mute by our TV coordinator here. So we were at recess, so I muted and that's that.
So if there is any change to these, we will re-upload them with the date. So you'll know what the edits are and we'll make sure they're in color, okay? Where is the proposed parking lot for this proposal specifically? Parcel and map numbers please. The applicant's not yet provided specific site plan showing parking layout and location. The parking layout location would be subject to review and approval by the planning board as part of the site plan special permit application process. Where are the off-site locations for other activities proposed for this project specifically? Parcel and map numbers please. We are not aware of other activities proposed off-site. How does the town plan? How does the town plan to pay for the road damage to Upper Church and other roads that will be significantly impacted by this project? And what is the estimated amount of annual cost of repairs, maintenance and upkeep? This will be determined in the negotiations of the post-community agreement abbreviated HCA here. If the location of the racetrack is approved at the special election and a license is issued by the gaming commission. Has the town gotten a definitive answer from the MDR commission that will determine whether this project is allowed use on APR protected land? No. Has the board of selectmen gathered or asked the fire, police and highway departments, the board of health and the municipal animal inspector, animal control officer for their concerns regarding this project? If not, why not? No, at this point pursuant to general law, chapter 128A, section 13A, the only board with a legal duty to act regarding the applicant's request for approval, the horse racetrack location is the board of selectmen. Does the town have an estimate for the actual cost of a comprehensive traffic study? Not at this time. A traffic study would be required as part of the planning board's site plan, special permit application review process, and the applicant will be responsible for the cost of a traffic review study. The select board chairperson indicated during a public meeting should be able to complete a cost benefit analysis. Has the board of selectmen completed this project? No. Has the board asked the proponents how much of the current CAC development principles are in current litigation over other legal matters? Which is a standard legal question asked of any contractor doing business with the municipality? No. Has the board of selectmen determined who will be negotiating the HCA agreement on behalf of the town? What their experience level is? At a minimum, the HCA post-community agreement will be negotiated between the applicant, town administrator, town council, with significant input from the board of selectmen and general public. Town council is very experienced with negotiating HCA. HCAs, I would also add that there was discussion of putting together a commission. So that would fall under the significant input. Is the host community agreement legally binding to the Massachusetts Racing Commission? The gaming commission will not be a party to the HCA, therefore is not legally bound by its terms. However, the gaming commission will require that the applicant and town execute an HCA before any license issued by the commission may be exercised. Accordingly, the commission will expect that any terms of the HCA be legally enforceable as between the applicant and town. Has the board of selectmen reached out to any leaders of our neighboring communities to discuss their concerns about the project? No. Okay, so those are the questions and answers. Okay, so what will happen now is each respective group will be allowed about 15 minutes. It doesn't have to be 15 minutes, it can be however long, to give factual information. What I did say to both groups is, keep in mind, there may be people sitting in the audience that are sitting here for the first time. I hope not, I hope people have been here before. But just sort of keeping that in mind when you're talking about your positions and your factual things, that there could be people hearing this for the first time. Procedurally, what's gonna be best Nicole? Should they come hear the microphone?
Or I can bring the computer to their table.
How about if we have you go to the microphone? It's just a Zoom issue, because it's just negotiating Zoom, so that the folks can actually hear and see you. So if you guys could come to the mic, is that okay? Notes wise and everything? You can, they're gonna be looking at your back that Zoom, so.
One or the other.
Yeah, yeah, I think either way. So. Okay. Sure, we can move the microphone back a little bit, is that gonna create feedback if I? I'll turn mine down. I'll turn mine down. Okay, so the first group we have are folks that are in favor of the proposal. You are welcome to come forward and. You're welcome.
Maybe like this? Yeah, it's pretty good.
My name is Devin Rude. I'm gonna be representing some of those who are in favor of this project, I should say. I've been a lifelong resident here and I have chose to build my career here as well. I work in town and hopefully for the rest of my life. I literally do not leave my street. There's just a couple things that I'd like to say. More so in general, I'm not going to speak for anybody. I'm not gonna speak for Commonwealth Equine. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of NDAR. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the gaming commission, because I simply do not work for them. I don't have any expertise for them. I'm just gonna explain a little bit about my story. Maybe why this would be good for our town. And just touch on a couple key points that I think have been, you know, glazed over and exaggerated. So I've been lucky enough to work on this storyline that we are talking about. I've worked there for several years. I've taken care of it. I've put my blood, sweat and tears into it along with the previous property owner. We've been able to do a lot with it so far, that's giving back to the town and everything like that. And it's been fantastic. I've watched many people walk their dogs up there, let their kids play up there, it's great. But in reality, sustaining that in today's generation is not feasible. There's no way that you can pay the money to maintain that land without doing something more that's giving you a feedback of money, some kind of income on your returns. So things need to change. If we could keep it as hayfields forever, I'd love that. I'd love to preserve the land as it is and let it go untouched and let it go totally the same way for eternity. I would absolutely love that, but that's not, it's not feasible. It's not gonna sustain life forever. It's not even sustainable now as you can do it, believe it or not. So there is some sort of change that is needed. If we can change in a way that fits our heritage and what we want, then we should be able to communicate that and negotiate that and work with people who are able to do that. We should put whatever we can get on deck and see if we can get the most for our town. See if this will actually work out for our town. There's obviously a lot of talk about agritourism now and all of that good stuff. And we see agritourism in our neighboring towns and, I mean, you know, the brewery right next door to us. There's a lot of agritourism popping up, especially in Brooklyn and other places. It's a way that farms are expanding their business revenues. It's a way that farms are still surviving to do what they want to do, but in a way that makes them money. You can see that over and over and over again, from many farms in our area that are expanding to breweries or to restaurants or any other places that offer a lot of entertainment and some fun stuff to bring other people in. So that's something to think about. It's something that, you know, I wouldn't want this place to be a brewery that's open 365 days a year, bringing people in day after day. It's not something that I would want for this place. But at the end of the day, what I truly want for this place is nothing to do with me, because I did not buy this property. I can just tell you how I feel about the subject and that's about it. Some key points that have been kind of exaggerated over the years and everything else that has been proposed by the applicants are just simply the fact that it is a breeding operation, it's hopefully a retirement operation. It is a grass track that does allow sports betting, yes, to generate some sort of revenue for everything else. To sustain the breeding operation, you need some sort of income. Any equipment for the track will be temporary. Due to APR restrictions, nothing can be permanent, other than a couple stables that are obviously, if you go through the right pathways, through planning board, through APR, you're able to build for horses. Other than that, everything on the track is temporary. Temporary stands, temporary tanks, all that stuff. Most days a year, it'll still remain as it does. They still plan on hanging, they still plan on getting the most out of the green space that they can and allowing people to still continue to use it as well. The HCA is a legally binding document to the town. So our town is able to still negotiate and get what's best for it. And it's a legally binding document. It does state in one of the questions and answers that the mass gaming commission does expect Commonwealth Equine to hold an HCA with the town in order to gain a gaming license. So if Commonwealth Equine voids its license, then there's no way that they can get their gaming license in theory, because it is needed by mass gaming commission that they have a solid HCA in place with the town. That is in the question and answer pamphlet, if you'd like to see. Gaming and wagering is primarily done on your phones, just as much as you can use draft teams right now from where you're sitting in the audience. Some people in this room may already use draft teams and may already place bets on bigger sports games all around the country. There's no other places than Hardwick to wager, just so you know. No other betting in Hardwick, no other anything like that being proposed, but simply being proposed as a grass track and a breeding facility. Commonwealth Equine has also stated recently that they would like to lower the attendance numbers to something that the town of Hardwick is comfortable with, and that would go in the HCA as well. The 500,000 is a minimum to the town, which could grow if sports betting grows or when sports betting grows more and more. The town will get every piece of their plans for that. That is a huge chunk. I mean, our town is sinking. Our town is, we all know the financial hardships that we're coming to. We get that and we understand that. We understand our lack of amenities to town, our lack of emergency response crews, everything like that. I'm not gonna say it over and over again, because there's no use in saying it to people that already know and understand. But there's a lot that we can do with that money. And a million dollars in two years is a million dollars more than we had two years ago. And that's something that we can use in any board, anything, from police to fire to office buildings. It is given to the town and the town is left to decide what they want to do with it. In closing, there's a group of us that have created the United Hardwick Committee with the town. We're just working on getting factual information to residents. So if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to ask me, call me, email me, and that is all.
Hi there, my name is Carol Zimsky. I am also a born and raised Hardwick resident. And I'm now raising the next generation of Hardwick residents, as is Hallie Kaylee. I've always been an active participant of the Hardwick Fair. I even heard that from my mother, I think, Miki DiMartino. She was a teacher that likely educated one of you or one of your children during her 30 years in education. In addition to that, I am currently the president of Hardwick Belges for Responsible Growth. We are a group that has adopted the proposal that has been put forth. And we also plan to work towards the betterment of the community in the future. And we also plan to work towards the betterment of the community in the future. We are all here today to talk to you about all of the research we've done on Commonwealth Racing's proposal for Great Meadow Brook Farm. Most of the questions all of you have asked are, aren't we getting $500,000 out of this? How many race days will there be? How does horse racing tie to sports betting wager? And is this racetrack feasible for Hardwick? No one person could have gathered this information and researched it on their own. Our group, Hardwick Villages for Responsible Growth, has taken the binding application that was submitted to the Mass Gaming Commission, the Mass Gaming Law, the Host Community Agreement as it is today, and the various studies that Commonwealth Racing has done to support this documentation that they have put forth in their proposal. I am here as your neighbor, your friend, and your concerned citizen to have you consider all of the elements of this proposal. I am now going to hand it off to Hallie Stillman to introduce herself and also start off with some information on the guaranteed money that the Commonwealth Racing has outlined in the Host Community Agreement.
Hey guys, Hallie Stillman. A lot of you probably know me. I know a lot of faces in here and I'm glad you turned up to hear some information on what's happening in our town. So, Holly, Kurt and I have owned Still Life Farm in Hardwick for the last 12 years. We grow fruits and vegetables right up on 32A by Petersham. And honestly, you probably know a lot of the Stillman family members as well. We own two other local farms in the area, one's in Hardwick, one's in New Brain Street. We all came here to this area to farm because this is some of the last available farmland in Massachusetts and this is a farmer-friendly, right-to-farm town. I'm Hallie. Hi. So, as I said, I run a farm business here. I own a home and property here. And I'm also trying to raise a young family here in town. Kurt and I have spent a day. Everything we have is here. And I'm hoping that my son grows up, learns to love farming, and steps into the next generation of our farm and our towns. To say the very least, we are invested in Hardwick. Because of my business, I also have a unique perspective of truly understanding what we have here in Hardwick. Hardwick is a unicorn town. There are very few spaces left like it in Massachusetts. I know this because I spent a good part of my life on the road delivering food from here to Boston to places where people live that are not like this, that do not have access to things that we take for granted here. So, when I first heard about this Commonwealth Racing proposal for Great Meadow Brook Farm, I thought it was actually a really great idea. I run a business. I'm always excited about the possibility of making money. It sounded like a great deal for the town. After quite a bit of research, which I do not have time to do because I run a small business and I have a three-year-old child, I have pretty much come to the conclusion that the price of having this business in our community is too great. So hopefully tonight you can listen to the reasons that we state and you can hopefully understand why we feel like this. So, once I began to delve into the nitty-gritty of their proposal, Commonwealth Racing proposal, I became absolutely convinced that this proposal was a betting and gambling business disguised as a horse breeding farm. So, questions about the $500,000. All of you in this room have heard that $500,000 number. We will not be receiving $500,000 per year as referenced by page three of the Host Community Agreements. So Kaylee is going to stand up and tell you how those numbers actually break down in reference to our town and what we will be receiving.
Hi everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Kaylee Raymond. I live on Upper Church Street in Gilbertville. And I'm just here to shed a little light on the $500,000 like Hallie should. So, all you've heard is $500,000. We've been told we can buy a fire truck, ambulance, pay for the police station. Unfortunately, this is, this proposal is not $500,000 and this will not do that. The $500,000 is split into several categories. First, the community impact fee, $240,000. The initial community benefit payment, which is $25,000. Meals taxes, which is an estimated $60,000, and a payment in lieu of taxes. Sorry. So about half of that $500,000 is described as being this community impact fee, which is for the expenses and impacts to this town, such as roads, effects to our local police and fire services, and additional unknowns. And that is quoted from the HCA. So already, we have lost half of the money that Commonwealth Racing is proposing to give to us. Importantly, the HCA also describes this to lessen the impact it will have on this town. And let that language confuse you. Lessen. This will not remove the impact it has on our town. Next is this community benefit payment. Commonwealth has proposed to pay 30 days after you receive all licenses and permits. At first, I'll be honest, I was like, okay, we're going to get this nice chunk from the beginning. But if you look closer, this is only payable once Commonwealth Racing has obtained their sports wagering license. It's not even related to the horse racing license. We don't know the timeline for this at all. Then on to the meal tax. Revenue is estimated to be about $60,000. So at 7% meals tax rate, this would mean that in one year, we would need $857,000 to be sent in meals at the Commonwealth Racing. So if everyone spends $20, a burger and a beer at the food trucks, we're going to need 42,000 people to visit Hardwick per year to get $60,000 in meals tax. And on top of that, what's the estimated benefit to the town at 0.75%? A whopping $450,000. So now, all we're left with is this payment in lieu of taxes. Remember, taxes are already being collected for this property. As Commonwealth Racing fulfills their business plan and they realize their artistic rendering, this payment stays the same no matter what. We're adding buildings, we're adding parks, we're adding more revenue that could, would go to town, but it comes out of the actual value that is that payment in lieu of taxes. And then when will we even receive this? The HCA says that payments will be made in the year Commonwealth Racing begins live racing and is fully offered. The year for payment begins in July of next year, allowing them to not even pay us until 2024. They will never pay us in July of 2023. They're not even going to propose to start racing until September. How will we have any revenue to receive? This tells you, not only are we not going to have $500,000 for the town based on what I have shared, there's very little left for our fire truck, ambulance, police station. The cost of all impacts come out of that $500,000, which at this time are totally unknown. No impact studies have been done. And now you know that we don't even know when we'll be paid, but it's well past 2023. Now Karen will go on to address the number of race days.
So I would like to reference the Host Community Agreement drafted by Commonwealth Racing on page six and seven. For the next five years, they have stated they will only hold races two to four days. This is like a summation of all of that. To the contrary, in their binding application to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, they state in Exhibit 6.7, quote, "not to offer more than 20 festival days, including racing, music, community events, over not more than six weekends within a year." Today, Massachusetts State Gaming Law says no less than 100 race days. I want to point this out as this is the information that we have here today. So I know that Nicole referenced that in her comments on that first question. I just want to say, this is the information we have today. So as I've said before, this is all factual information provided by the Host Community Agreement, Commonwealth Racing's binding application, and the Massachusetts law today. Along with the number of race days, we also need to understand the primary goal of the Commonwealth Racing is to make money. As subsequent from their past endeavors with pursuing these licenses in Sturridge, Great Barrington, and Plymouth, just to name a few, what truly makes the money is simulcasting and sports wagering and betting, wagering and betting, they're synonymous, neither of, neither of which they can get without a racetrack license. With that, I'll hand it back to Kaylee so she can get more specifics on that. So as Karen introduced, the horse racing license is linked to what is called sports wagering license. For those of you who don't know, sports wagering was just put into law in Massachusetts in August of this year. Outside of Las Vegas, this has only taken place across the country in the last four years. Massachusetts is expecting to have sports wagering live by the Super Bowl in the coming years. This will allow for betting on various sports leagues such as the NBA, NFL, and this is from the most minute details, to the Super Bowl winner. Platforms for sports wagering include in-person and via mobile betting applications. Those in favor keep saying that the sports betting is great. It's all mobile. Someone in Vegas can make a bet and will make money from it. Why wouldn't we want that? Well, I can tell you why. There are three important points in this claim that are not true. One, Massachusetts has been very clear in their laws that out-of-state use will not be permitted for grant of licenses. There are strict guidelines for this. They will make sure that bets cannot be made across state lines. And this has already been done in all the other states where this is legal, so it is very not. Although the HCA says Commonwealth Racing will only pay, sorry, though the HCA says Commonwealth Racing will only pay us if there's sports wagering license. They get their sports wagering license. Hardwick gets none of this in the HCA as it stands. This was intentional as the HCA specifically calls out that we only receive a portion of the horse racing license if we get the sports wagering license, but then we don't receive any portion of the actual sports wager. These are two separate licenses with two separate applications separately mentioned in the HCA. It is also significant to Hardwick in what we stand to gain. Sports wagering is the most lucrative part of their plans. The Spectrum Study funded by Commonwealth Racing estimates that they can earn up to $400 million in sports wagering industry. And again, Hardwick gets none. Third, there are three categories for wagering. One, these are in the casinos. Two, simulcasts, like what this will be. And three, mobile sports betting. First by simulcast location, they are automatically guaranteed an opening for this sports wagering application. It is not a competition. And the sports wagering license that Commonwealth Racing is applying for does allow for a mobile application and a physical location. The mobile applications will have cornered this by companies like Devon mentioned, DraftKings, that already exist. They know the whole playing field. They know how to monetize on this. We can expect that Commonwealth Racing will want as much in-person wagering as possible. The taxes for the physical locations are 5% less. They will stand to gain more money if they maintain this physical location. But where will it be? Problem is, we don't know and they won't tell us. What we do know is that Commonwealth Racing, according to the Gaming Commission's application for sports wagering, must invest $7.5 million in the first three years, and that is a capital investment, which means it must be a physical item, land or buildings. So what? We tell Commonwealth Racing, we're not going to be in it for sports wagering. It's not that simple. They funded a study concluding that alternative gaming must be needed to be profitable. Tracks and states who do not allow other gaming are struggling and the latest new track without gaming closes in two years. The reality is that the scope of this proposed business has been grossly misrepresented to Hardwick residents. A yes vote opens the door to sports wagering facility to come to Hardwick with no benefit to us. It is clear as day through the documentation submitted by Commonwealth Racing themselves that, 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 sorry. It's just clear as day from the documentation they submitted themselves. From the HCA where no commitments are made without the sports wagering license to the study that the Commonwealth Racing paid for that states horse racing and simulcasting will not be profitable without additional form of gaming. A quote from the report, "I don't want to say that only a fool would do it, but only a gambler start a horse track today without some additional form of gaming." I'd like to turn this over to Hallie to share more information.
All right. So I just want to point out that the items that were referenced there have been referenced there are all available to you online through Great Meadow Brook Farm LLC, I think, dot com or something. Someone can correct me. So they have an 18-page application, yep, and on the Hardwick website, so application into Mass Gambling, uh, Mass Gaming Commission. And in this application are all of these things, okay? So when I hold these up for reference, so you know what you're looking at. Towards the creation of a horse park in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a feasibility study. And so I have a piece of emails. This is sports wagering at prospective racetrack and home in UMass. This is by Spectrum Gaming Group. These are both studies that are submitted with their gaming application, all right? So when I reference these things, that's where it's coming from. As you've learned, the primary intent of Commonwealth Racing is not to make money off horse racing and sports betting. It is to make money off horse racing and sports betting, not to just operate a thoroughbred horse farm. They need the Massachusetts Racing License to get their sports wagering license. Otherwise, this entire operation is moot. They want with this racetrack a Great Meadow Brook and want your yes vote in January to get their wagering dollars. Their concern is not for Hardwick, but for generating their own massive earnings. We're just immune to it, okay? I would be doing a great disservice if I did not talk for a moment about the feasibility of using this land for gaming operations. So, yeah, this report, if you're looking yourself, okay? So, per UMass Horse Feasibility Report from Dr. Mullins, that the Commonwealth Racing supply to our town and the Gaming Commission, there are six criteria that must be met for assessing the fitness of a potential location. So for time's sake, I'm just going to talk about three of these. So if you're going to have a successful racetrack, you have to have three of these criteria, okay? One, workable racetrack terrain to ensure appropriate drainage and prevent erosion. So I don't know how many of you guys know this, but Great Meadow Brook is APR. So that's defined as agricultural preservation restriction. It's also held in Chapter 61A, which is referenced to farm property taxes. So this means it sold its rights to allow for development and pays lower taxes, lowers taxes because it's a farm. I'm pretty familiar with land preservation. My own farm is held in covenant with a different land trust, the East Fotherland Trust. The point of these programs is to maintain farmland as viable options, to never allow them to be developed. Now I know you're looking towards progress. So now I know if you're looking towards progress, it might be easy to roll your eyes over farmland conservation. It seems kind of light and fluffy within this context. But I'm pretty sure, and I make my living off the fact that everybody needs to eat. So in the light of recent global activities, this farmland viability and local food chain should be at the forefront of all of our minds. If Great Meadow Brook is approved for the uses that Commonwealth Racing is proposing, it will set an extremely, extremely dangerous precedent for all APR lenders. Commonwealth Racing is using a loophole to obtain land that should not be used for racing and betting business. Even in their own UMass feasibility study, it clearly states that the sites free from agricultural protections under Chapter 61 and 61A will be best suited for sports betting operations. That means non-ag land would be best suited for this sort of venture. Of course, Commonwealth Racing wants to keep this designation. It is to maintain the tax relief. Taxes that we, our town, Carter, will not get even as they use this land for their revenue profit. If this land were taxed at the commercial rate, it would be nearly 10 times more. As you heard, over nine million will be used to ready the racetrack for the safety of horses and citizens. Commonwealth Racing is proposing a grass track, although their UMass report states that dirt tracks are safer for horses. This grass track will require grading, drainage to be laid under the track, substrates to be under the track, special turf, not hater, and railings that withstand horse weights at high speeds. The construction of this track will be a significant departure from agricultural land. So now for the damages, which according to our host agreement, they will not, Commonwealth Racing will not be paying. Should Commonwealth Racing decide to shut down, they have not provided any monies in the HCA to repair the damage. After installing a large racetrack, it would take millions to return the land to its natural state for agriculture. Their horse track application states they would be spending $10,000 in weed killer and fertilizer on this land every weekend they race. So, to me, this sounds a lot like a bull's horse. This will not produce the high-quality hay it does today and it will take and will take years of work to turn the soil back into agriculture. All right, point number two, useful locations. It says in here, useful locations. So tip to location is not vertisol, minimized traffic impacts. The UMass feasibility report states thoroughbred racetracks are rarely more than three miles from an interstate access. In contrast, Great Meadow Brook Farm is more than 30 miles from either exits of Interstate 90 to the south or two from the north. Visitors must travel through several small towns on these routes using winding roads, many used for agricultural roadways. This is not only inconvenient, it's dangerous and it puts undue expense and risk for these communities who will require additional safety, personnel, and road maintenance, all at our town's expenses and our abiding town's expenses. As for the hundreds of trucks they will need for the 300 temporary stalls, the hundreds of horse trailers and the temporary housing for all the heli, they will have to navigate these same tight roadways. There's four major routes in and out of Hardwick, probably a lot of you live on a lot. How will you feel when 5,000 people per race are commuting here from out of town, not familiar with our quiet, dark, twisty country roads, driving too fast? Will you still be out walking your normal routes? Are your kids going to be safe walking home from the bus or playing outside? Are we going to be able to drive our tractor down the road to our off-site fields without getting into an accident? Which Kurt and I have a personal history with, because of our long line of families that's been in farming. Next point, land use compatibility. Says here, natural partnership, character and culture of host community. Commonwealth Racing are investing over $20 million of Massachusetts gaming funds and additional millions from investors into Great Meadow Brook Farms and the surrounding areas to develop it, to develop it into racing and betting facilities. Commonwealth Racing has promoted itself to Hardwick as an agri tours and business with a sweet race, horse breeding and retirement farm where farm table restaurant will feed visitors who want to come and pet the horses. Then there's the other part that was not advertised to Hardwick residents, and that's the 218-page application to mass game. So, this included a report stating that horse racing alone is not viable, horse racing alone is not viable without wagering and sports betting. You cannot have a horse racing farm and make a living off of it without having sports racing, sports betting and wagering. Okay? The Spectrum report says alternative gaming options are necessary to ensure overall profitable, profitable operations, thus sustaining the horse racing industry. It's on page 16. The UMass, the UMass Amherst feasibility report also states a horse farm is not viable without racing and wagering revenues. All right, let's just talk about this. Anywhere that you have a vast amount of money being, um, invested, there are certain expectations that need to come out of that investment. So the money that's going to be invested in this town to make this business profitable is going to change how we see, how, how this town is forever. It's always going to be different after this. We are a farming community, not a gambling or wagering community. And let's not forget about our communities. So another big issue that we're going to have here as Hardwick residents is overdevelopment. It's going to lead to a lot of issues for everybody living here. Um, so the overall investment toward this business, Commonwealth Racing, that's being proposed in their application is $20 million. A lot of money means a lot of development. Here's what will happen if we allow Commonwealth Racing to set up shop in Hardwick. Due to the scope of their business and the amount of people they intend to host in town to make money from sports betting, our town will be developed beyond our recognition. Here's what it will look like for Hardwick residents. More development is going to lead to higher property taxes for those of us who own. For those of us who rent, this type of development, where we're hosting huge numbers of people on a non-permanent basis, will lead to a spike in rent costs and create a transient town, pushing our community members out. Anybody familiar with Airbnb? I'm very familiar with it from a community that I work with in Boston that's gone through the same development process. Over the period of time that I have been providing vegetables to these people, I have seen so many people have to leave their homes and relocate to another town or city because they can't afford the rents anymore because Airbnbs have doubled those prices. There will be no affordable renting in any Hardwick villages. If Commonwealth Racing comes here with the scope of the business they're proposing, they're going to need a lot more land than just Great Meadow Brook Farm. So they are going to apply pressure or offer cash amounts to people that will not be able to turn down, um, to accommodate those land needs. So you're probably going to have to say goodbye to all your open fields, your beautiful dark skies, your summers and your idyllic country life. To sum it up, the cost of this business coming into town is just too great. It outweighs any benefits that may be perceived. All right, Kara is going to close. Quorum and brief, uh, it's just a summation of all the points that we've touched on this evening. And I just want to leave you with this final thought, or these, uh, final thoughts. I ask all of you, do you have the information necessary to vote? Do you have the detail you need to understand what is truly at stake here? I ask all of you to think about the questions that I brought up in the beginning. What does this $500,000 actually mean? How many race days are there and what can be guaranteed? What will sports betting wagering mean for our community? And my final question, how is this racetrack feasible for our small town, Hardwick? We don't need to settle for this. We don't need to rely on this proposal. Vote no, January 7th.
Thank you both. Um, one was clearly a little bit longer than the others, so, um, we apologize for that. But, um, I did not time them, I didn't think I needed to. Um, it's 8:11. Um, so, um, are there, I will entertain questions. Questions need to come through the chair. Um. Okay, Devin, do you have a question? You need to hold to the mic, please. And remember, we're trying to be factual here, if we can. You can use this mic if you want. Just don't stand too close to that one.
So I'm just writing down some notes from this, uh, presentation. Uh, just a couple of things that I wanted to touch on as there were certainly some things a little elaborated. Um, one thing is that the community impact, the police department is stated, uh, by Commonwealth Act and is stated by numerous people, that details for events will be paid separately than the $500,000 to the police department. So anything needed for events will be paid separately and will actually probably benefit our police department, um, more than just the $500,000 that will be given to the town. Um, you did touch on the 100 days too, uh, but you failed to touch on the last bit of that sentence that does state, I think the town administrator got it from the Gaming Commission, that in August it is down to 20 days per a minimum, which is why that is stated in the applicable agreement. So that does come straight from mass gaming. Um, and with that, 1.5% sports betting is from the state, not at all from Commonwealth Act. So that is, um, I just want to know where, where this information of track design has come from. Did you ask the applicant directly of all this training that's going to go under the track? I mean, I just, I just, I don't know if it's information or not. So you, you know, it's difficult.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We're seeing enough with the talking in the audience where people are screaming. It's disrespectful and rude. Okay? It's distracting. I understand this is emotional, but, uh, you know, people, people deserve respect when they're speaking. And I'm watching facial expressions and I'm watching what's being said. Please listen to what these people have to say. We're giving them the time to speak, please be courteous. Um, Devin, do you have other things that you'd like clarification? Why don't you just all of the things that you have questions of clarification?
I'm, I'm close to the end. I just want clarification as to where the track design and engineering came from. Um, whether you ask Commonwealth Act yourself or whether that came from a different study that's totally unrelated. I'd also love to know where the 300 stalls came from. Um, because I don't believe that was mentioned at all in any meeting prior, um, to anything. So I'd love to know about that. Um, the other thing is, is I guess I just have a general question. That in any business, do you have a way that you're trying to make money? Do you sell your crops for free? Do you give your crops to free, free? I mean, no offense to you, but I'm just wondering if you have. Well, do you go to crops for free for multiple people or do you go to make a revenue? Because obviously in any business endeavor, you're going to try and make a revenue. That's, that's the entire reason that you're running a business, whether it's farming or commercial or anything else. I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal that, you know, obviously they're trying to make revenue in sports betting or anything like that because that is, that's how a business is going to function.
So, so let her finish what, are you, are you?
That's, that's, are you sure that it's two businesses? Okay. And have you talked to, have you talked to Commonwealth Act how they work together or not?
Sure. As long as Devin's gone, obviously.
And I'm.
And, and so just a reminder, we want to keep this factual, please.
Follow the questions, but as far as the 300 stalls, it's in the application. Oh, I was turning down. Yeah, the 300 stalls is in the Commonwealth Racing's application to the Gaming Commission. It asks number of stalls. The applicant estimates 300 stalls. Yeah, was it the track? Is it okay if we defer, like we have planned here with us? Um, someone to speak on our, the factual? Is it okay? Or? If you do not.
So this person's going to speak to what? The, where the claims of the track design come? Oh, it starts getting non-tactile, I'm going to cut it off. Okay.
Yes, Devin, we can supply you the six or seven different tracks that we actually pulled all the information from to make the turf tracks. So that came from Saratoga, it came from Churchill, multiple tracks. So they were all the same running thoroughbred racing and all turf.
So can, can we please have that information? Can you please provide that information so it's available?
Um, just as far as the 1.5%, I haven't seen that in a letter to my attorney that sent the 1.5%.
So again, we want to keep this factual. If it's, if it's information that we need clarification on, happy, happy to allow it. If we start going, we're, we're sliding a little bit down a rabbit hole, I'm going to stop it.
I understand, you know, I've been to Saratoga, it's beautiful. Um, the track is a lot different than what's being proposed, though. What's being proposed is something very similar to the Steeple Racetrack, not a Saratoga sand track. So there is a lot of engineering that goes into the Saratoga track, that is correct. But that is not what's being proposed at this site. And that should not be what is viewed as what is being engineered. Um, I would strongly suggest that any other questions on engineering and track building and whatever is going to happen, construction, be deferred to the applicant because they're the only ones that's obviously going to know what they're going to do.
Okay. Fine. Um, I didn't recognize, I have to recognize who's going to speak. So, okay, so we have 11 minutes left. Um, what I'm interested in, if there are questions, I'm not interested in, uh, and again, factually, I think to sort of keep this on track, are there questions that have not been answered? That's what I think we should be addressing at this point. Um, we've addressed all the questions that have been presented so far. So are there additional questions that have not been answered, um, that we need answered before we leave tonight? We have 11 minutes. Again, factual question only. No statements, just a question, please.
Um, and we have not received any engineering drawings from CEAC. So we are, any information that we are making on is based on existing things. So if they are willing to provide, I guess the question is, can they provide engineering drawings of how it's going to work?
So we will make a note and we will, um, ask that, um, they, if it is available, that it is provided. Nicole, can you make a note or I'll make a note? She had her hand up first.
I'm Fred, I'm the janitor of Church Street. Um, I know a little bit about communication because I have an FCC license, extra person. Have you asked what, I mean, I have seen how difficult it was to get Comcast up to, up to Church Street. We had Verizon first, so forth. Everybody knows, it's not a given like in a city where they come, they hook you up and you have a five giga. They could even watch movies. And I would imagine that a communication center that they've beat to beat, second by second, information on where the horses are by inches would have a worldwide broadband or spectrum need that requires towers, satellite comm, electricity and, and installation of, of, of world class communication.
Can you get your question, please?
My question is, have we, have we, is that an aspect that is irrelevant in the whole discussion whether we want the racetrack up there? Or is it something that will come anyway with, that, that is on the side? Or that is not concerning the people who are making the racetrack?
We can certainly ask the question and for them to provide any information on that, thank you. So, so, so it's been advised that it's actually in the response, um, that was just provided. Um, if, if it is not, we will make sure that the question is answered.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kula and I live in Gilbertville. And I have a question and I would like Commonwealth Racing to clarify, uh, two things. One, they talk about, um, mobile, mobile racing, somebody from out of state being able to bet. And that is absolutely not according to the law. So why is that in their answer? Um, and two, could they please clarify the 1.5%? Because as it is stated in the HTA, it is 1.5% only of simulcast racing revenues. There is zero mention of revenues from sports betting in the host community agreement.
Thank you, we will make sure that those are answered. Meg? Again, if it's a question, I'll allow it. If it's a commentary, I'm going to stop.
So it's relating, my question is relating to section 3.2 of the application uh, for the license with the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. And, um, it talks about the application stating the days on which racing is intended.
And it talks about the application stating the days on which racing is intended to be held. And it makes note from the Gaming Commission to please note that a future licensing may file supplementary materials or amendments for new or additional license dates in accordance with the law, GL 128 days, paragraph 10. My understanding is that a location vote is permanent, that the town of Hardwick is stating to the state of Massachusetts that at any point in the future, without our needing to approve it a second time, someone can apply for a horse racing license at that site. Can you please confirm that I have the correct understanding?
All right. That is correct. So, Alex has said that is correct, that is correct understanding?
In my opinion, that is correct, that once the site is approved, the statutory requirements met, so, you know, going forward, future applicants would then need to go through all the state application requirements and any local requirements as well.
We only have time for a few more questions, it's 8:25, so you can go right here. As long as it's a question and not a comment.
It, it's a question. Thank you, madam chair. Quick question. So, I'm wondering if racetracks, without any sort of manipulation to the underlying soil, without any of the infrastructure that the no folks have commented on, may be in here, has that type of racetrack with a track, with a grass track, without any manipulation of the soil, has that been constructed or brought to New England in recent history? Has that happened in recent history?
We'll get to an answer for that. I apologize, I'm faced this way because of my own thoughts that way. I don't wanna ignore anybody who has questions. This is a question, right?
Just on the fact that the 5,000-ish people coming in each weekend and affecting the traffic in all the other towns, Stone Cow will have a race of 15,000 people. Has that affected anybody's traffic? That's all I got to ask.
So, so the, I think the, the question, if I, if I might, so is the question, have, have they surveyed or has anyone reviewed the impact with Stone Cow? So, so I think that's not a question we can probably answer. I, I would... So, so I think, okay, understood. I will take, I'll take your question. Clearly, I will allow you and Robert, if there's time, I'll answer. This is a question, right?
Yes. I wanna know if people fully understand that 20 race days, which is up from the four maximum we first heard about, if they fully understand that 20 race days include 50 setup and takedown days in which we will have heavy traffic and heavy vehicles moving into that area, if they understand that. And if they don't understand that, and if we talk about a comparison of one day of 15,000 people opposed to 70 days...
Lago, it's not a question.
It's, well, I wanna know how many people fully understand 70 days of very heavy people and traffic coming down.
Understood it, okay. I hope so, okay.
It's the town council. So, in the first, oh, sorry, in the first Q and A, it seemed like you were agreeing suggesting that HCA was only required for the category two license, but in this updated question, it says that the town must execute an HCA before the horse racing must be exercised, but I don't know, is, can you confirm that that's the case? I didn't see any legislature on an HCA for horse racing, but I did horse sports betting. If you could take your comment on it or take it down. So, is the HCA explicitly required for the horse racing license? I understand that there is one required for sports wagering, but the horse racing. So, will we be legally be obligated to enter one? Because the Gaming Commission was going to rule on their application as soon as the yes vote was put in, and they were reviewing the application without any HCA. So, I don't believe it is, but I would like town council to check.
So, we will get back to that answer. Okay. It is 8:29. I, I'm not inter, I'm not interested in the comment. It has to be a question. It has to be a question. It has to be a question. That's to be fair. Okay, okay. So, we need to speed it up a little. Sorry, I'm just trying to keep our fast short.
Okay, the question is, we haven't discussed the APR of this farm tonight and what it really means, and I'm just prefacing it that Devin talked about a brewery, so I'm assuming you talked about Stone Cow. Stone Cow Brewery is not on APR land. The Dairy Farm's on APR land. Stone Cow is, is not on APR land. So, that's two totally separate businesses, as well as the crowd that comes on one-time events, these Tough Mudder, what are they called? Those are contained crowds, they don't need hotels, they're one-day events. So, to get back to Great Meadow Brook, we're talking about a commercial business trying to get on a farm, and the APR, the only part of the APR is the horse breeding. The horse breeding has to make more money than the racetrack to be on APR provisions. So, my question is, how can a horse breeding operation make more money than a racetrack and silicates?
Okay, thank you. Linda is the last question. It has gotta be a question, no, no comments, please. And can we be frank, because you are the last one, we are done.
All right. So, I have been in communication with the five towns coming into this town, Barry, Ware, Palmer, Watson, these people are already coming in on highways through their town into our town. Are you aware, because I'm assuming none of the towns has contacted these other neighboring towns, that any infrastructure damage or any noise or any unusual activities such as a lot of traffic coming through their towns, they are allowed by law to sue our town for not having them informed and having a say in this decision?
So, I think you're asking the question of Alex and whether that's accurate or not. So, can we get back to Linda on that, on whether they actually can, that occur? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. It is 8:32. I, I appreciate, I understand that this has been, so let me say this. I appreciate that people have been respectful. I, I do appreciate that we tried to get as many questions answered. There, we do, I have written down the questions, we will make sure that we get the appropriate answers and that they get posted. Alex will report back with his questions. The town clerk has asked us to be kind and put the chairs up as we leave. I wanted to thank everybody, both sides, for your presentation. To them, for us, because they got to put intentional answers out there. The problem is not, can we answer those same questions to people about them? Then if we need to have something fair that says, our position's on, because their position changes. So, that was easy, like sleep. All right, that was easy. Robert, are you still in touch?
Now, I can hear you. Yeah. Are you moving to adjourn? Is that what I heard? I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We need to call a rule. Rob?
Rob, yes.
Rob said yes, Kelly? Kelly's yes, meeting is adjourned to 8:34.
Thank you.